Member. Member Johnson, can I get a roll call, please?
Chair Christine Gator?
Yes.
Jessie Andreen? Dominic Barani?
Here.
Sarah Nack?
Here.
Myself, I'm here. Jason Mellon?
Yeah.
And Nick Grediven. Free David Grediven. Free David. Finance Director?
Here.
Charity. Trustee John Gator?
Here.
No Patty tonight? And Janice?
Here.
And you are?
She's the Accounting and Budget Analyst for the town of Wellington.
And your last name?
Foster. F-O-S-T-E-R.
Thank you.
We'll start with the meeting minutes from February twenty seventh. Can I get a motion to approve? Or are there any changes to the meeting minutes? All right, can I get a motion to approve the minutes?
Motion to approve the minutes.
Motion seconded, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, thank you. Next, the board compensation.
So, I guess we'll be kind of picking up from, we had a little bit of conversation last meeting about this. I talked with the mayor and he said that what he'd like to do is have the finance committee kind of go back and forth, figure out some ideas of what you guys think would be appropriate, and then basically put that into a presentation that you guys then bring to the Board of Trustees, and then that can become part of the budget discussions for 2024 budget. So I know Dominic put some stuff together, but really the goal was, he likes the idea of just have the finance committee, you guys hash out what you think is good, I'm happy to give input on what will be helpful to you, but really the goal is that you guys figure out what, between yourselves, what you think is appropriate, and then that'll be presented to the Board of Trustees, and then that'll be put into part of the budget discussions that'll start happening as we kind of get into the May-June timeframe throughout summer, as to whether or not that gets pushed into budget for next year.
All right. I guess.
Yeah, I, so I put something together kind of quick. The way my brain thinks about this stuff is like, I mean, I figured it'd be helpful to throw some averages out there first. I don't even know if like cost per citizen is really relevant, but I have a staff for population, I have a staff for salary. So, yeah. Divided them by each other, right? So I, I don't know if that's really how relevant that is, if we want to kind of be in like the ballpark of other sized towns. I threw a couple, I just, I excluded the zeros. I actually also excluded, you'll see at the top there, there's like an average, Board Trustees' costs, average mayor costs, that's per citizen with and without zeros. I excluded the bottom four, the twos, Monument, Timnit, Eaton, and Dakano, Dakota, just because the numbers are like super low, and I was kind of dragging it down, and that's more of an argument for like not paying them at all, really. Just thought it didn't really make sense to use, if we were trying to think of like an average. And then, yeah, those are cost per citizen numbers at the top in row two and three, and then I just dropped population number given for Wellington, to come up with just a couple of bands, right? Like if we're not including zeros, we are, we could just take like a straight average of this, like, I couldn't take a straight average, but that would be forty-two hundred if I'm excluding the zeros, and like forty-six hundred, so I'm like, we can do that, I could throw those numbers together, kind of put it in the slide. There's other things besides averages to use. Any more like big picture thoughts, I guess, like this, that's just how I looked at it and thought I should put it out, but time and place we can, we can think about this.
It's helpful to see the comparisons. Yeah, I think you did a good job.
Well, you can sort each of those columns, obviously, and the colors will kind of adjust too, so you can see like gross, high to low. Because you could argue, you can make the argument that like, fun spring should be included in the population here, like if I'm excluding zeros, they're a little bit of an outlier. Just in terms of gross and cost per citizen. So, the, the, to do as many different ways.
Well, what is our goal? For paying them, is it just to compensate them for their time? Is it to incentivize them to show up? Like, what is our goal?
Personally, like I think it's, you can make a pretty clear argument that, this like relative to other towns, especially in the same band, comp is light, right? That's, that's kind of obvious. If, as far as goal, I mean, we kind of, as well as last week, like, I'm not really sure, I'm not really sure that any change you can make here, like, within reason, is enough for character, I think I'm like dictating activity, but if there's an appetite for counting meetings and like putting some admin structure in place to, someone's got to keep track of it and get the information payroll, it's not a ton of work, but some work. Not opposed to doing it on a per meeting basis. Yeah, to me, my opinion was like, come up with some bump up that you could do to get you kind of in the similarly sized bands. Yeah, whether we're using straight average or just the highs and lows. Some give and take.
Let's throw out a number here that looks good to me, I think thirty-six hundred seems to, seems to make sense. I mean, if you were to take the cost per citizen, you were to apply that to us, that's about where you line up, if you were to average, that's about where you line up. Also, if you were to think about potential cost of the trustee, like if you didn't travel your laptop, things like that, you know, that seems like it would probably cover it.
I, I will let you know that the laptops are budgeted in the list. Thirty-six hundred dollars averages out to about a hundred and fifty dollars per regular meeting, not work session. Are you saying, does birthed is per meeting, if you look at our packet?
There was, there was, there's some round math in here, because I would see like per meeting, I'm like, I don't know if that includes work, like some of, so, plus or minus.
I'm just asking, Jason, which one would you prefer? You mentioned birthed in thirty-six hundred.
Well, no, I, not because it's birthed, but I think thirty-six hundred just seems about right annually, and I wouldn't say per meeting at all.
Just per month, then?
Yeah, so.
There's actually, I mean, yeah, there's a bunch in that thirty-six hundred, three thousand band, and they're all like kind of similar populations to us. The straight average if I exclude six hundred, three hundred, the two zeros, and the twelve thousand, straight average of that is forty-two hundred, so, I mean, you're definitely in the ballpark, thirty-six.
That's not a monthly figure, that's an annual, right?
Annual, yeah.
If you were to average, including the zeros, you're thirty-eight hundred, so. Mark it.
My question is, is do you want the mayor compensation and the board compensation to be the same, or should it be different?
How much more work does the mayor do, do we know, like hourly, or, I know it depends on?
Sure. I mean, the way it works here with our current administration, she is meeting with the mayor. I think Patty, correct me if I'm wrong, but she does meet with the mayor more than she does with each individual trustee, and the mayor does have more responsibility in terms of having to be a signer on the bank account and things like that. So there is more work involved being seated as the mayor.
Is that like significantly more, you think? I'm sure it's hard to, I don't know, I think it just depends on the individuals, probably, but.
It, it depends on the individuals, and I think it also depends on kind of this stability of the community. You know, sometimes when you're in an unstable environment, those mayors tend to do more work annually than somebody who has a very calm community that they're working with.
Yeah.
So I think that's something to take into account.
Well, like the round number of birthed in thirty-six hundred and forty-eight hundred, that's four hundred a month and three hundred a month.
That's what I like to, I think forty-eight hundred's good for mayor, just my opinion.
I would agree with that, because I don't think that that's too drastic of a change from what they're getting paid now.
No, it's a bigger raise for trustees, but it's not like, it really just puts, it puts you back in the middle here, really, both those numbers. But like middle of the low, which like, feels like that's what it should be, honestly.
So we have thirty-six hundred and forty-eight hundred thrown out there. Any other thoughts, opinions? Sarah, Pat?
Sounds good to me.
Yeah, I'm kind of like thirty-eight for Board of Trustees, and I guess that third, or maybe forty-five for mayor.
Round numbers.
Yeah, that'd be a little complicated, three, three hundred and sixteen dollars.
I think that's like, that'll, that'll get us up to like a baseline, we wouldn't stand out as being under lower pay, and I don't think that's like too, too much more, honestly. Obviously, there's always like some politics and raises for stuff like this, but I think the numbers are pretty supportive.
All right, so the trustees want a recommendation from us. So, I'm hearing thirty-six hundred and forty-eight hundred, because they're round numbers, three hundred a month, and this is monthly, three hundred and four hundred. Happy birthday, but without the per meeting. So, and I'm hearing.
Okay.
Can I get a motion?
A motion, yeah.
Your motion? I guess I can. Let's see. Do you guys want to do a, a roll call in case anyone disagrees?
Yeah, okay.
Okay, let's do a roll call. And say your vote when your name is called.
Yeah.
No, I can do it. Chair Christine Gator?
Yes.
Jessie Andreen?
Yes.
Dominic?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
I vote yes. Jason?
Yes.
Nick, absent. And that's it.
That's it, yeah, voting members, perfect, so, oh, I it passes for a recommendation to the board from the finance committee.
I guess the question is, how would you like that information presented to the board?
I think what would be, based on the conversation with the mayor, is whether you guys want to assign someone, but if someone can come and just do a presentation, and I can ask when they want to do that, whether it is part of our budget meetings, or if they want to have an earlier part of a work session or something like that, but that can basically come and share just kind of the thought process, what you guys were looking at, how you got to your numbers, and then just be able to answer any questions that members of the board might have. So. I think that would be best if you guys are okay with that.
Yeah, I can do that. Throw out the number, I can back it up.
Let's pick someone different, like already presented at the board, we could pick someone, perfect. Jason will be the presenter.
So what I'll do is I'll find a meeting date to get that on the future meetings agenda, and then you and I will work together to get all of that presentation uploaded for packet.
Thank you. Financial policy, final. So what I printed out in front of you is the same document, but with just the changes that we had talked about verbally at our last meeting. I think it was only like three or four things, let me go through what they were for you. It was the shoulds to shall, so I just did a, a find and replace for all the shoulds, change from the shalls. Page two, getting rid of the needed and desired, and the same provide municipal services. Number two, on the same page, inserting to be presented to the finance committee and then the Board of Trustees. Adding prost, the official name of the person that. And then that's it. The, the components of the fund balance policy, I wasn't sure if that was supposed to stay in, but I left it in.
I understand the question.
I thought it was also deleted, but.
I already deleted a big chunk of it, but if you guys want that taken out, then we can adopt it minus the components of the fund balance policy.
Didn't we already approve something for the fund balance policy? Or what?
We have a separate fund balance policy.
Because then this is redundant, we don't need.
So I can take this out, and then that can be the document that we send to the Board of Trustees for final approval.
Yeah, you might want to, I mean, I don't know if you want to leave a reference to it in here, like fund balance policy, like just please see blah, blah, blah document.
So, I can reference?
I, I just think, yeah, basically just delete the last page and a half, or what have you, the last two pages.
Okay.
Please refer to.
I can do that.
Look good, are we ready to, to pass this and move it on to the trustees? Okay. All right, let's do another roll call. For the, oh, after, a motion and a second. Who would like to motion to recommend the financial policy to the trustees?
Who would like to second?
Oh, sorry, Joe. Second.
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Nick. Happy birthday to you.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you for being here on your birthday.
Sorry, Mo.
It's okay.
I hear you have to come on every day. There's, there's cupcakes, you want to grab one, pass them around?
Deal.
Have you been a good dad?
Yes, yes. I'm on vacation now, too. I leave for Disneyland on Wednesday.
Well, thanks for gracing us on your vacation. We are in the middle of passing financial policies.
No way to do.
Want to get the quick notes on the comp?
Packet, I can steal. Thank you.
Take, take a break, or we'll. Process. At six twenty-three.
Okay. We're seeing a quick reset.
Okay. Okay.
All right, six twenty-seven, we're coming back from recess. Can I get an amendment to the finance policy?
State what the amendment is.
Yeah.
The amendment of getting rid of the fund balance.
Components. Components.
Are we, are we amending the motion? Because it was a motion to approve, right?
Yes.
So I will move to amend the motion to replace the fund balance policy on page six and seven with a reference to the existing fund balance policy.
I have a second.
Second.
Done. All right.
So we have to vote on the amendment, and then vote on the motion.
You got it.
All right, so we're voting on the amendment now. Do you guys have a preference as to whether we do a roll call or just all in favor? We're all in, we're all in agreement, okay. All in favor of the amendment, say aye.
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 None. I see that the amendment, amendment is carried. Now we're going to go to the motion of the finance policy. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries, thank you.
And with this per direction, how would you like that presented to the board? And Jason, oh, sorry, that was the other one. Signing you for everything.
Well, really, and I guess I probably should clarify this before I voted, we recommended approval to the board, right? So should one of us present that recommendation, or is that, are you going to present the policy?
What I'm asking, what does the finance committee prefer? Do you want me to take it to the board, saying this has been approved by the finance committee, and we are looking for final approval of financial policies, or would a member of the committee prefer to do a board presentation?
Do you have the chance?
I know someone wants to.
I don't know if it's necessary.
I, I think.
We could put it on the consent.
Yeah.
I think just, if, if you're, if you're going to have a presentation or any other presenting anyways, just say, include this, and to, to the point of that it has been recommended for approval from the finance committee.
I can present it to the board, or see if we can put it on the consent agenda.
Either way, I can discuss it as well, as early as.
Doesn't seem like the finance committee has that opinion, so whatever you guys want to do.
Doesn't sound like a very interesting presentation. I, you don't want to be there, like, the town of Wellington defines a balanced budget.
But you know, this is going to give us brownie points on the audit, because they're going to ask for a financial policy, so we're making progress.
Yes, that's right, that's good.
All right, moving on to number four, that discussion. So Dominic and I chatted a little bit via email with some of this, and I think he had some input, but a lot of this was brought up with last meeting, and some questions of what kind of debt do we actually have, and why are we incurring debt, so I gathered some documents. The first one is the defeasance that we did in twenty-twenty-two. I think would be important to talk about why we went through the defeasance process in terms of our water and wastewater projects, and the purpose of it, and kind of just go into what that actually is. And then the rest is the incurring debt that we've been carrying with us with our water and sewer projects, water purchasing, our bonds, the typical debt that most municipalities go into. So I don't know if you had anything specific you wanted to bring up first.
I just, no, I, I could tell like part of it was like printed from an Excel, so I was like kind of looking at it, and it was like, well, I don't know if you have that Excel document that I wrote on screen shares.
I do.
While you're pulling that up, can someone explain defeasance to me?
So basically, we're taking our debt, we're getting a loan to pay it off to get it off our books to incur more debt. Correct?
It's refinancing.
Yeah, we're refinancing our debt, and we had to take two million dollars and get it off the books, correct? Do you remember this?
I do, I, this amount sounds right. So we had, and this was for the sewer plant specifically, and so we had a portion of our debt from an old, from an old expansion, I think it was, on the sewer plant, and what we basically did is we took, I think it was about two million dollars, I think we gave it to a trust, if I'm not mistaken, and then that trust is basically going to use that, and they're actually going to pay the loan off earlier than it normally would be paid off, but basically, from our standpoint, it looks as if it's off of our books as of the time we gave them the two million dollars, so that we could then turn around and get the larger loan that we needed to finish the sewer plant.
Who's the trust?
It's with Zion's Bank. That's where the money's at, and then we also have, they make the payments, we pay the paying agent fee, that's like two hundred and fifty dollars each month that it's being paid. I think part of the reason why we're getting it paid off early is because the interest that that trust is incurring monthly, and with interest rates the way we are, the way they are, we're making more money on that trust than we thought we were. But that was the purpose of going through this process.
What money did we get? The money we borrowed?
No, so we did that with money that we had in fund balance for the sewer plant.
At a collateral trust.
Yeah. Which, we're on the flip side, then, we're taking out money, like that money could have been used to pay down a portion of the project, but it was used to pay out those loans, which therefore means we needed a larger loan, so yes and no, we, yes, we use money we had on hand, but it also then we have to use more money from the loan to pay for the plant, because we're taking money out of fund balance that we had.
Any concern about Zion, I think?
I mean, right now, that's a loaded question. If you look at everything that's going on, things in particular.
Zion's is one of the ones that I've seen as risky.
Unfortunately, this has all been done prior to me coming aboard, so now this kind of opens up that question of I don't know if we can do anything about it and change it.
Okay.
I don't know if we can move the trust to another bank.
Who owns the trust?
I believe the town.
The accounts under the town.
All right.
Sorry, I'm, I'm looking to see if I can find the meeting that we approved it in, so if you bear with me a second, I can find it. We did this back in like, May of last year, I think. So I just have to go dig at the rate.
So we took funds from, we took cash, put it in a trust.
Correct.
The trust paid off a loan.
They are paying off a loan. I, I don't, it's not paid off as of this moment. From our perspective, as I understood it, from our perspective, the loan is paid off. They no longer look at it as how Wellington owes any money, because that money is out of our hands in the trust. And then the trust then pays the loan off. I think it was over the next year, or two years, or something like that, I don't remember the exact.
It's going to happen faster now that.
It is going to be paid off faster, so it was on a couple of ends, it was going to save us money, because we're not paying interest on it as long. But the bigger thing was getting it off of our books, so that when we were going through the bond process, we were going to be in a better position for getting the new bond.
No, it's going to be like a debt service workbook or something. It has a bunch of tabs that looks like that.
Oh, yeah.
Each year.
Does this make sense to everyone else? Or am I?
Okay, it was very confusing.
Like, money concentration at a bank?
No.
Because I'm pretty sure it's owned by like the. Cause I'm pretty sure it's owned by like the obligations owned by a trust, not, so it's not owned by the town.
But the town owns the trust. I'm just trying to understand the site, this circle.
We already made, the circle, yeah, I mean, we're, we paid it, town's paid it as far as it's concerned. It's in another legal entity that's doing other stuff with that money and other money and making interest on it. And then paying the loan, charging us like $250 a month or whatever.
Okay.
They're making a little bit on interest, a little bit on the fee they're charging us, but it's paid for as far as town was concerned.
So it's not money we're going to see again. It's not coming back to us.
That, that is shows up as zero rounds.
Okay.
So did Zion's Bank take on the obligation from Town of Wellington?
Yeah, I mean, wouldn't be, yeah.
That is correct, from what I understand.
And they're paying us a little fee monthly. We pay them. Oh, we pay them a fee? To use our money?
Yeah, well, they're taking a bunch of debt off the books. So, yeah. They charge us a little bit of fee and then, yeah, they make some interest.
It, it's like the paying agent fee every time that the payment's made.
Okay.
Cause we take.
It's pretty common, like it's pretty common. And I'm assuming you had to do this to get new sewer bonds. Yeah, like you didn't really have a choice.
And so we pay BOK Financial and Zion's Bank pays all of the payment to them and then we pay the $250 paying agent fee to BOK Financial. Because that's where the original debt's still from.
We can create like a blow chart. Draw a picture of it.
Repeat any business ideas, like just create your own boutique financial services firm and stuff like that. Points along the way.
So I guess, yeah, I, I, I heard Zion's Bank that that became a concern because I know they are one of the ones being watched. But if it's not money, we're coming back to it. It's not.
Yeah, you're not, we're suddenly back on the hook of the balance.
Okay.
It's that transaction's cleared.
The only thing we'd be on the hook for is anything over $10,000 that we have there, right?
I don't think so. No.
Well, if we don't.
We, it's paid as far as like.
But we don't have money there. It's.
Yeah, no.
Okay. Yes, we would be on the hook technically, although they.
Why didn't we just say that from the first place again? I'm sorry. I don't think you can just use fund balance to just.
There was, yeah, there was a whole thing we went through with our bond agent and they said this was the best way to go about it. And I, I wish I could find it now. Agendas and I'm not seeing it on any of them.
I wonder if there's like a pregame penalty or something.
Well, I think there's very specific parameters in terms of bond repayment. And that's why when you do things like this, you have to get bond attorneys involved to make sure that we're not out of compliance, which was part of the negotiations and all of this. So, you know, it's not like personal finances where we can just go and make a payment and pay it all off early because they rely on that interest. And so we are held to a different standard.
Yeah, we can't just keep paying out a fund balance. So like basically you do this defeasance process, you pay the money that way. Then the loan you're trying to get next, you get more than, you get the delta, right? And then you replenish it.
I think I found it. It was April 26th, I think.
So, but in the finance policy that we just passed, it said that we're going to try to pay off debt sooner. But now you're saying that we can't?
Well, I think some, it depends on what kind of debt we incur. So I think your state loans have different parameters than actual bonds that you get out. And most of the debt we have coming for the water and wastewater plant are loans from the state of Colorado.
Which you can pay off early.
Um, yeah, we're going to work on that. I think the ultimate goal is to put us in a situation where we have all of our departments and our funds having flush budgets and then focus on debt. I think it's kind of a two-step process right now.
And those loans can only be paid with the enterprise fund, right?
Yeah. Well, no. So 10% of your general fund can help go towards the enterprise funds, but none of your enterprise funds money can go towards the general fund. So it, if.
But the loans, the loan payment to get out of debt early, that only 90% can come from
The enterprise.
The 90% has to come from the enterprise.
So to get out of debt early, you gotta be, you'll be making money in the general fund and then you can take 10% of that.
Right. But I guess I'm also saying if we wanted to pay off early, we're looking at, that could mean rate increases. So there's.
Well, we already did the rate increases and I would implore you to not go down that road.
No, exactly, exactly. No, that's, that's kind of the point I'm trying to make is that if we want to pay it off early.
I think our best bet would to be focus on getting our general funds into a healthy position.
So that we can put 10% over towards it. Okay. That makes sense. Cause we don't, we don't want the enterprise fund to pay it off early per se, because that means rates have to go up to fund to that. So, but we want a healthy general fund so that we have money laying around to contribute to it. Cause that'll help us.
Ideally.
And to clarify, the 10% is the 10% of the revenue of the enterprise fund. So for example, if our general fund brings in $7 million, 10% of that would be 700,000. But if our sewer enterprise only brings in, let's call it $4 million, it's 10% of the sewer. So, right? We can't have more than $400,000 that would be, there's an official name for it. I think it's your, it's not a loan, but it's like a grant from
Government.
Governmental grant, something. But basically the general fund is getting a grant to the sewer fund. And it's 10%, no more than 10% of the revenue of that fund. So.
So, so yours.
We're capped by, is that, it's going to be.
And that's.
And I don't know. I don't know what rules that, because there's a lot of confusion on that. Cause this is back when, if you look back, it's 2020, 2021. This is when the marijuana was coming in. You had people saying, oh, well, this can be used to pay for water. But then we kept being told, no, it can't. So then we were like, well, no. And then we found out, well, actually some of it could be. So there was all this back and forth because we were getting two different messages. We're getting, on one side, we were had a finance director saying, well, no, you can't actually use any of the general fund money. And then we found out, actually you can. And we actually did in 2022, we did actually take in, take a grant from this general fund to both of sewer and water funds to help offset some of the fee increases. So.
So then you're saying the two-step process is to get our budget looking nice and pretty so that we have.
I think the ultimate goal right now is we need to focus on an actual tied down budget that doesn't have these interfund transfers, that is direct billing for each cost. And all of our revenues are reflected appropriately. And once we have that in place, we can really have a better understanding of where each fund lies. Because for so long, it was kind of this shuffling smoke and mirrors. So 2023 is, was a starting point, but I think we still have a lot of work to do in terms of budget cleanup and where we're going to be moving forward. You know, there's just general internal practices that I would like to see a little more meticulous. And this is part of Janice's role here, to where we know exactly to the penny what we're spending out of each fund and for what purpose. And then also what we're receiving in each fund and having everything separated out in this nice, pretty package. So when you look at the budget and the financial statements, you know exactly where everything stands. We are noticing moving forward where we were extremely conservative with revenues, especially right now in our interest earnings. In most of the funds, we've already hit our projected revenues in January alone on our interest earnings because of where our banking situation is at. So I think next year will really be the telling year of where we're at, actually.
Right.
The 2024 budget is going to be where we know if we have that capacity to start having the general fund. And it'd also be per the direction of the board, because the board has been very clear that they want another police officer. So if some of these unexpected revenues go towards that, then we're kind of in the same spot.
But I think that's a good idea is having recommendations from you guys. Cause obviously one of the priorities that we've talked about is additional law enforcement and that's something we're looking very highly at. But it would be good for you guys to come up with, hey, if we do, because right now, and that's where charity said getting those numbers is going to be really helpful. So getting the fully audited 21 in 22. So that we, because it's like, you know, in some cases you look at our budget last year for the general fund that if you're closing out at 23, seems like, hey, we, we have a lot of money and we think in the fund balance for the general fund. But before we just say, oh, great, well, let's just go give this to the other enterprises. We need to make sure everything is tied off and know actually what's there. So, but that would be good for you guys to come up with if we do see that that is, because those could be some things to say, hey, do we put some of this into the water and sewer enterprise for a couple of years to help keep things more stable for residents? So we can again, not have to see big jumps and we can keep things stable as we go through that. But again, then it comes to us to balance that against, okay, we also want more law enforcement. We want another SRO. We've got all these other things that we have to decide, you know, what do we think is the best route to move forward on?
So it doesn't sound like for water and sewer paying off debt sooner is not a good idea because it will come from the rates of the customers. The only thing that we don't have an enterprise front fund that's a debt is the park, correct?
No, we actually still have a park fund.
Right. So we can, that's the only loan that we can pay off early without raising rates on people. Okay. Here we go. We got one loan we can do that for.
And I think further down the road, maybe want to have a discussion of strategically, how long can we go without incurring any more debt? And, you know, what is our forecast look like in that feasibility?
Is there anything else that you wanted, anyone want to talk about with the debt service?
I did pull up the document from the 26th that had the defeasance on it. And there's like a couple of paragraphs I can read that gives a short, there's a lot more to it if you guys want. If not.
Are you able to just share it out like email or?
Yeah, I can email you guys the link to the, to the document.
Oh, yeah.
That we want to go through the packets. It's, I'll put the page to, it starts.
And I feel like I co-opted the conversation because you asked for a spreadsheet to go up and then we went down.
Some day my first school audits or what have you, I'm sure some senior gave me like, oh, you'll take a look at audit debt or whatever. I'm like, what's the future?
All right. So let's go back to the.
Yeah. Cause I see like we were trying to in the packet like kind of show year over year that it was going down. It's good. It's kind of hard not to look at it.
And this is from what was provided to the 2020 audit, because that's the most current audited numbers. So clearly our debt picture has changed in two years, but it gives you an overall idea of where we're at.
You guys like tied out on all this, like you feel good about the 12, 122. Numbers.
I'll, I'll let you know in a couple of weeks when we get through some more of a 2021 audit.
So what are, columns, I guess I should have paid attention.
Principal and the bowl number.
Balance 19, principal and interest paid in 20, and then the balance of 20.
Left and the right, we want to see go down. From the left, the right should be lower.
Yeah, they're all going to be going down because you pay them. Do we, do we want to pay that part one off really? Do we get more from college trust? What was that again? 2.7%?
Um, right now at the end of February, color trust was at 4.9% interest per day.
Well, sweet about. It's pretty money. Or draw.
What's going to save? Can I review the video? But I think that was the day that we had issues with the video, because that video's not there. But convenient. I'm sure we have the recording of it because we also have that. So if you really wanted to go back and listen to it, just shoot an email to Patty and we can find you the audio recording. But I sent you guys the link, so it'll take you straight to that agenda. And I also put the page number that it starts in.
Thank you.
So you don't have to go searching through the document to find it.
So Jason, you're saying we're making more money by having our money sitting in there versus paying off.
Yeah, I kind of went a little tangent there, but yeah. We're making more in interest than we're paying.
So what's that interest on the platform?
It's 2.31.
Yeah.
So I mean, not all that, that's really bad, especially with this kind of rate environment.
Well, and this kind of rate environment was not something we've seen in two years either, you know.
We haven't seen this rate in about your many years. Yeah.
I mean, what is it in 20, summer of 21, it was like 0.7% interest per day in color trust. So now we're looking at 5% and they're looking at another rate increase today, weren't they? Like about 25 basis points instead of 50. So the base points driving the interest is going down, but we're still seeing rate increases. So I think maybe right now what I'm hearing from you guys is to watch our monthly financial statements and our interest earnings and kind of play things by ear on how this is going to go over the next few months.
I think that, I mean, the rate spread is just.
It's insane.
Yeah. So it's not, doesn't make sense, make sense to pay off debt that we're earning more money by keeping the balances.
I was, I mean, unless you've projected to somehow have enough of a access in the general fund where you couldn't, yeah. So like if you, if you were going to have access in the general fund, you probably want to use some of that to try to pay some of this off just because you can use 10% each year to do it on something, but we're not there. It's only the enterprise fund because they're higher. Just talking about the perks fund is great for me. Just the parks. Yeah. Okay. Cause we've got a water bond at 5%. It's like, yeah, let's give, let's put that one down.
And I would say probably our May meeting will need to, since we'll have a closer end date for the audit and hopefully have 2021 done. We may want to have a strategic budget discussion where we have May financial statements and some audited numbers to see how do we want to integrate into the budget, some of these strategic goals.
Yeah, we'll, we'll need to know to like, because honestly we did 22 budget. You're using your best guesses for numbers at the time. So I could definitely be curious to see like audited 21s versus like all the inputs we use in the 22 budget and see like, where were we like?
Where are the variations?
Somewhere that we thought we were either going to have more or less money in this fund that we thought we did. Because like, that's going to carry through, you know, carry through the, we already used some of that in the 23 budget. It, it'll sort of like work, snowball. And it was, it would have snowballed its way through your budgeting process.
I mean, I think 2022 budget was a stop the bleeding. And it was a best guess to do that. And I think moving forward, we just need to fine tune everything to where it's supposed to be.
Which is so encouraging that we're there and able to do that. It's, it can stop now.
Yes.
And I mean, that is something that the auditors are going to ask about, why was this practice going on? We will address that then, but the fact that we've stopped the bleeding does show that we're moving in the right direction. Anything else?
Uh, no, I I actually don't remember, I couldn't remember from last meeting. Why the debt was in the package.
I think, because the question was what loans we had outstanding, because I mean, we were talking about. We have the two large ones with the water and sewer plan, but we weren't sure what other debt we had outstanding, and I think that was kind of what had triggered it. With what are other obligations, so like the. I know we're five percent, but that one's going to be paid off the end of this year, I think both the top two will be gone end of this year, and they're both. I mean, they might be a high interest rate, but they're so small. And then that.
Yeah, I'll just pull up the twenty three and the twenty two tab.
Well, we're still working on that, but.
Yeah, let's just, let's just look at this workbook again when when we're done.
And after twenty one's audited.
Yeah, so the most of the debt that we have is pretty small, when you look at it in comparison to the the two primary ones.
I mean, it looks like a lot of loans.
It will look a lot larger after this year.
So, sir, I wanted that sewer loan was a monster.
Yeah, what was that, twenty?
Well, no, twenty two million is.
Twenty twenty three.
Yeah, so the water loan was around twenty two, the sewer loan altogether was like fifty something million dollars. So, the other thing too, to keep in mind, when we're talking about being able to do the train, the. Grants is that. The water loan was secured back in two thousand nineteen, I think. And we received the money into twenty nineteen or twenty twenty. The project cost went up significantly from what was envisioned back in twenty nineteen to what we actually went through. And some of that we were able to find out upon balance, but because we were bleeding so much money out of our water fund. We have to come up with additional funds to be able to actually complete that project. And so when we're looking at some of those transfers, that will likely be one of the areas we look at doing that from the general fund if we can. Is to make up some of that ground on the water project, so. I don't have no final numbers yet, because we're not going to know until we get the audit done, we figure out what. Funds were used in places they shouldn't have been, how, so we actually know what is in the fund balance that can be used for that, and then we have, then we'll actually be able to. Know, okay, how much do we have to come up with to be able to hit the construction numbers?
Our, have construction costs started coming down, I mean with?
I don't know that they have. They're not. Just spiking anymore, which is good, like I know I work in industry now and. We're not, you know, saying, hey, your price is good for, you know, we're holding prices for six months and. We're not seeing our suppliers jump prices on us, so we're not seeing what we were before, but I don't think the prices have really dropped, I think they've just stabilized.
Alright, revenue, thank you. Um, staff report. We're just going along with the audit, um, we're still working on twenty twenty one, uh, so we have not started. There's some twenty twenty two testing that's been done, but not a lot. Oh, I still don't have a date on when they'll be on site, because they're doing most of the work remotely still, but. They're sending me nice long lists about every week. But we're making progress, I feel good that we're actually.
As you say, I've I've been working with them so far.
Really good. It's just down to business, we need this. Um, they're not coming back with a lot more questions, which is helpful. So.
Have they started looking at all of the fund downs transfers, maybe given them a lot of all that stuff?
I mean, I give them the twenty one financial statement, so they. Are aware of all of that. They just haven't gotten there yet, they're more so focused on AP right now.
Yeah, they're doing easy stuff. Yeah, they might, um. I I I guess, um. How much are they like in the know about like a little bit of the mess that's like fun balanced stuff?
They are in the know. But what has been communicated to me is because they specialize in local government. He's really good at seeing. Who's spinning down a drain and who's plugging the drain and digging themselves back up. And I think he, that's what he's going to identify is that we're no longer just spinning down a drain. And we've made a lot of good progress in making change in the organization. And that's what they're going to want to see. We may get dinged for a few things here and there. Um, but again. I wasn't here, Janice wasn't here, Patty wasn't here, we can't really change that. Um, and all we can do is, you know, put. Financial policies in place and internal controls and move forward to say, look, this is where we're going from here.
And I guess that would be one benefit of having these back to back is to see that. Starting the improvement and then where we are now going into twenty three.
Because, I mean, we stopped doing the inter fund transfers in July of twenty two, July one of twenty two, right, so that was when I was like. No more, let's direct bill payroll, let's direct bill all of our AP. So. That shows progress. And Janice, Janice has been here two weeks today.
Welcome, we're glad to have you.
Thank you. I love it, I love, um. I just, maybe I'm too optimistic, but I think it's going to be wonderful once it's all cleaned up. I mean, I've only been looking at. Files and things for two weeks, but I mean, it feels like this is resolvable and. Yeah.
That was the goal, we 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 hit twenty twenty and we were like, this is good. Especially this year got going, it was just like we we understood we're going to have to make a lot of hard decisions, it was going to be really rough, but we were like, if we can survive the next two to three years. We're really going to be on the upside, so we're finally starting to see that upside, where we've got the right people in place and everything's coming together, so it's good.
We'll go to trustee Gator.
No report from me.
Alright, we'll move around the table.
I just keep going on the audit and finish my train of thought, uh, that's okay. I might, I might push them a little bit to try to get. Some draft twenty one statements or like fund balances going.
Okay.
Just kind of worried that there, it's like going to wait till the end, um, and I'm sure the little thing is for some stuff on the management layer, but. Like next time, like, it's kind of nice doing this all at once, because you can actually show a little, a little inertia and things changing.
Okay, what's the deadline for the twenty twenty one to get it out the door to the?
The deadline was June.
Right, but so for twenty twenty one.
We're not.
We are getting, we're not getting, we're not getting property taxes until we file that budget or that.
They've also stopped our conservation trust.
So, and this is the Michelle that we're working with in the professional, okay, uh.
So yeah, the deadline is as soon as we can possibly get.
Yeah, I mean.
So maybe our company is doing our audit, and we'll talk more about this tomorrow.
Yeah.
Well, bring it to speed, but our audit is almost a year late for twenty twenty one.
Like, I don't want to speak out of place or anything, but maybe. Michelle or you or whoever over there can dedicate me to, what does she need for the audit? Help charity get all this information, what do you need today, what do you need tomorrow, just load us up with with.
Yeah, I, they're like, they're doing their thing, they're checking their boxes while they're doing the testing, that's all like fine and dandy, I'm just like. Okay, when are we going to get like new state, like a new draft set of statements with like?
I know, we're all a little antsy.
It's like, that's what, honestly, like, my partner on the job, that does what I've tried to kind of first would be like, my own first pass, like what I think statements might. Actually end up looking like, so I was just like, maybe you might want to pump them on that.
Oh, reach out to them tomorrow and see kind of like a ETA.
Ask like, what what do they need for fund now, like, what do you guys literally need for like the transfers for fund balance, like?
Okay.
What can you guys do to start putting the draft financials?
I will reach out to them tomorrow, and I will send you guys an update when I hear something.
I'm just worried they're saving the hard part for last, and then the hard part at the end is going to drag on a little.
I I hope not.
Rather than do that first, because like, that's the hardest part.
And I hope they don't drag it on, because we do have to get twenty twenty two done.
It's it's going to need like partner, or like, I forget how their structure works, exactly, but like the highest, the partner jobs and have to look at that stuff, so.
Do we get two management letters? So there'll be. Twenty one could look like not a great management letter, but twenty two, well, hopefully they'll start to see.
Changes.
What we do, so we can't have any significant deficiencies or material weaknesses, probably some of the bond stuff, and then. Hopefully they'll be nice and just like beat us up, pull it by bullet, and not actually say like, this is a significant deficiency or whatever, but, uh. I'm optimistic, I think they're nice, and if they get, they know their niche, right, like, they know who they're trying to help and who their clients are, um. Yeah, we'll see what's on the water on there.
But really, I mean, the twenty one letters. It's not going to be great, it's not going to be great, but it's it it just is what it is, the twenty two letter is the one that's going to be more like. This is where we are now.
Hold more weight.
Yeah.
Because twenty one, I mean, it's. What it is.
Right.
Yeah.
Thank you for the cupcakes and the song. And that was on video. Just remember, anyone can watch that, I, you guys singing.
I don't have anything other than to ask about the April finance meeting.
Yes, well, what's going to be on the meeting, what do you guys?
What day are we having? Seventeen, just confirming that.
Yes.
When we have schedule for that meeting? Do you know that CIP?
Uh, I did. Talked to Bob and Megan, they said they could probably make April, so I will touch back. Touch base with them again and see if they want to come do their CIP presentation. Um, I guess we can kind of keep it fluid, because if they can't make it, we'll see if I have some preliminary audit documents that we could go over for that meeting.
Yeah, if they, if they're not available, I would, yeah, I would be curious to see like how far through. We've got, like, to see what they've asked for, like, to see what you think, I know it's kind of hard sometimes, but like, what you think is done. Alright, like, you'll know that they're done testing AP. From your point of view, and it's like, if you want to share like most of it.
And then, just as this isn't, wouldn't I mean, be applicable for April, but in May. Um, we're going to be having discussion. Uh, the board of trustees on. Potentially the twenty third, talking about revenues and whether or not we add an LCSO corporal and some other requests that we have that's scheduled to come back to us in May.
So that is why I suggested the May meeting, we have.
Yep.
The pro, the budget pre discussion.
Perfect, yep, that's, that's exactly, I just wanted to highlight, because we will be literally right after that, we're going to be. Discussing whether or not we want to make amendments to current year budget to work on adding an additional uh law enforcement.
Is there any? Like, anything that can be brought to us in April, whether it be something that you're teaching us something or like. Just information, so that by the time we get to the discussion in May, like. I I think the term that I can't even remember now, create the deficient. Like, is there anything you can bring to us in April to prepare us for our May meeting, whether it just be more informational, educational?
The May meeting is really going to focus on the general fund, so we could. Bring in the general fund financials, make sure we highlight our. Interest revenues, um, since we were so conservative, and if we have our twenty one audits submitted by then, we might have an idea of the back. Funding that we will be having released to us. Um, so we would have a better financial picture.
Has there been talk about when they want to hire another LCSO?
Um, January of twenty three is.
Was the preference.
Yeah, that was the preference, the preference was twenty three, and I pushed back hard saying, we need to wait until we know. Right, and that was the whole thing, is it's like, we kind of sort of think we have the money for it, but at the same time, we're like, we don't actually know where we're at. For everything, um, Sergeant Cherry is also making some adjustments in how he's doing the scheduling, so it'll give him basically about. Three, four months of running on the new schedule, and then he'll have a better idea of how is that working? Is it functioning well as it is, do we need to still paying that, I mean, the preference is obviously to have the additional corporal here. But. My ask was, can we get to May, that gives us a chance to hopefully get the twenty one audit done. So hopefully it will be done by then, it'll give us an idea of where we're at first quarter of twenty twenty three, so we can kind of see where the revenue is at. Where our expenditure is at, and then have a conversation about, okay, based on where we're at with these things. Do we think that we can justify, even if we did. In that meeting in May, say yes, we're admitting the contract and pulling another corporal, LCSO actually has to go through the process of hiring, so likely that person wouldn't start until fall. Of twenty three.
I I think one thing we'll probably have to have a discussion about is. Even though we're seeing a higher revenue with our interest earnings, um, is that a looming problem with? Property tax values and sales tax earnings? You know, are are we going to start seeing less sales tax revenue because of inflation right now, or? How is it going to shake out, so?
People are still spending money.
Till our credit cards get maxed out. Right, so. Um, I think that will all be part of that discussion we have in May is what really is. Our financial picture heading into two, three, two, four. And do we? Do we feel comfortable making a recommendation to bring on another LCSO officer based off of interest revenue alone? When it's not guaranteed.
Yeah, yeah, and that totally makes sense.
Yeah.
I know it's not, I think outside of our purview. To. Like, I guess we could say, yes, it'd be okay to use money or not use money, but I don't know if there's. Like, that's out of our purview to say, should we use it for LCSO?
Right, I think what would be good coming from you guys is just looking at the financial picture, do we feel like, hey, yes, if you wanted to expend further funds? And either you guys want to say, hey, looking at the numbers, we feel like you could safely. I mean, just, we'll see what the numbers are, but I think that would be good coming from you guys are saying, hey. Looking at the financial situation, we feel like the budget is well set up right now, we really, we wouldn't recommend that you. Um, expand on the budget this year, we would recommend wait, that might be your recommendation as well, I think that.
I think that makes more sense.
Yes, like, and then we can have a discussion of. Do we want to go towards LCSO officers, do we want to go towards something else, and then we can go from there.
I want to make sure we don't get.
Yeah, 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 you don't need to go into how we should spend the money, but what would be good is, again. You've got the financial background, you're looking at the numbers, you guys, a lot of you guys work in the industry in saying. We feel like this would be a good idea.
Is there money there, is there not?
Yeah.
Something to think about, coming from an organization where we had in-house PD is, once you always add a physician. Taking one back is much more difficult.
Yes.
So. Keep that in mind when we look at the finances of, is this really something?
Right, and it could be a point of, do we do a one time expense, do we recommend like a a debt payoff? Versus an contractual ongoing expense. So, there are options, I just want to make sure it's.
Yep.
We're not taking a.
We're also not going to, we're not going to have twenty two statements by that point either, though, so we're still really not going to, like, we look at the first quarter of twenty three, but like, we're not going to know. If like our starting point from the budget was really right, and so. We're also not gonna, we're not gonna have twenty two statements by that point either, though, so we're still really not gonna, like, we look at the first quarter of twenty three, but like, we're not gonna know if like our starting point from the budget was really right, and so. But like, we didn't really say that there's extra money in the twenty.
We don't know what the auditor's journal entries are gonna be for twenty one and twenty two, and this is gonna be a trickle down effect.
Right.
For our starting budget and our ending line.
We, we used anticipated actuals from twenty two as like starting points for the budget and last year's budget, so like. There's pretty big swings underneath, like, yeah, you're not really gonna know that. Yeah, Tom wants a, our should pull these off, so we'll do our best to save us some money.
It, it's not your job to tell us what we wanna hear, it's your job to tell us what we need to hear, that, that's why you guys are here is, we don't need people telling us what we want to hear, we need people telling us what we need to hear. And if we need to hear is stop spending money on government people, then that's what we need to hear.
Yeah, we're, we're, I, we're just not gonna, like, we're not gonna have everything.
No, I get it.
We'll have some.
The whole, the whole thought process, we, we're gonna be in a better position of information than we would have been in January.
Yeah.
Or really, realistically, in November, December.
I go back to what you say about the paying off the debt early and what you're saying about like. This could be a, a short-term, one-time windfall with interest and then we have reduced income, like. So balancing all of this, I guess, surface level information we have, cuz we're not gonna even have the detailed reports before we're making recommendations. So just start thinking about that kind of stuff now.
Unfortunately, we just have so many financial variables that we're looking at. Which. Makes the weary to make any decision whatsoever, but we have to.
I'd say it's expensive and it's gonna be ten percent more expensive again next year, so like.
Is there guidance anywhere on funding a position with interest earnings?
We have any guidance anywhere in town?
So it's, I'm not sure that's, um. Well, from my work, I don't think we would do that.
My guidance would be no.
Right.
And I think that would be good, these are all, these are all the things that are good to bring out in that conversation is if we come to that and we're like, revenues are up and it's all from interest. It's like, well, great for that, but you shouldn't, cuz all your other revenues are down, and I think that would be good guidance to have on that.
So I have a question, audits were done in July, so when do we get the first property payment after that?
Once I submit them to the state, so if twenty one gets completed, April, May. I send it to the state, we are no longer out of compliance. So one, yes, once that happens, once we are filed with the state auditor's office with our twenty twenty one audit, we are. Moving forward positively.
Are they gonna wait for the twenty two audit to be filed? Cuz I'm gonna be close to that deadline.
That is another thing I'm going to poke them on after the twenty one preliminaries.
Yeah, it's always something you can do, now, I get it.
I, I, I'm kind of walking this tightrope of, I wanna give you what you need, but I don't want to be pushing you too much, so you don't move our work down to the bottom of the pile kind of thing.
Yeah, I get it. Yeah, I, there's a couple philosophies you could take with them with auditors.
Well, if you would like to provide me with.
I'm pretty, I, yeah, I'm a pretty, a pretty straightforward person, so I might not, but I can see just like, you know, you just give exactly what they ask for, that's that, like, I would understand that.
All right, so as the meetings go on, we'll have more information and then hopefully we can make either generalized time recommendations or say, wait, let's get more information before we make a decision. Yeah, that's great, let's see what happens with the audit and our finances, perfect. All right, anything else before we adjourn the meeting? I have seven twenty one, oh, Sarah, did you have any reports or anything you wanted to say?
I don't think so, I'm sorry for missing the last couple of meetings, like, got a little bit out of hand there for a while, but we should be good to go moving forward.
Glad you're back, all right. Okay, we're gonna adjourn the meeting at seven twenty two, thank you guys.